Okay, welcome to our November 7th Town and Iqwa regular meeting. We will start off with the approval of our agenda. It is resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting agenda for November 7th, 2023. Moved by Counselor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Counselor Nado. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Everybody would have received the minutes. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held October 17th, 2023 circulated. Moved by Counselor Pottinger, seconded by Counselor Gerard. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. See, because of the weather, we don't have any presentations tonight. So I guess we'll go right into council reports. Counselor Nado?
We've got a couple, so I could go first. I had a meeting on October 18th with Westlake Employment. And we just actually, just this week, we renewed our contract with the province for another year. So we continue to advocate with the province for more resources for Iqwa and region in order to have more better employment services. Some interesting stats over the last year, how we've helped in Iqwa. We've actually helped train and support people that are interested in training. Over 28 Class 1 drivers, 49 healthcare aides, two LPNs, and two heavy equipment technicians, and a bunch of other employment opportunities, which is really good for our area. On October 18th, also had a Western Manitoba Regional Library Board meeting in Glenborough. Got to see their library, and it's a nice library also in our region that we all have access to. They have some interesting things you can borrow there. You can borrow a LeapStar, which I'm pretty sure it's like a kid-friendly how-to-read type of computer that they can read with. You put in cartridges, and it's got books on these cartridges, as long as it's what I'm thinking. They also have a telescope you can take out. But they're actually purchasing a Nintendo Switch now that you can use within their library, which is an interesting move. And they already have virtual reality there. So that was some interesting things, maybe some ideas that maybe our library one day could get. We're looking at our 2024 budget. So as a library board, we're looking at the budget, and we're looking to pass it at the next November meeting, which is in a lot of time. We have one month to bring it back to our council. Some of the highlights of the budget is we're looking to increase the levy by 65 cents, which would bring it to $13.50 per resident in the town of Iqwa. And with our population, that would be an increase of $3,695.25. If you look at our funding model across the province, we really underfunds libraries. A lot of other municipalities are paying upwards of $19 to $22 per capita, such as in different cities. So our region, even though it is a modest increase, definitely, it really is, when you look at it as a whole, we're still paying little for the amount of services that we're getting. And a lot of good things with us being part of the region, so definitely a good thing. Another meeting I'll report on is just on October 30th. We had the Yellowhead AGM meeting, and we were able to fill all the slots except for a vice president and a member-at-large. But we have some needs in order to fill those holes in the board. The new director of operations, as you all know, is Bill Sirick. He started on October 13th. At the regular meeting of the Yellowhead Board, we talked about, you know, for a grant to get new LED lighting in the hall possibly. So that's something that we're looking to pursue by working with some of our local contractors to help access that grant, which will help, help in a couple ways. Help with the environment, but also be more efficient, especially with electricity. We're also working, part of the study that we just had done had really suggested that we had an annual budget, and that's something that the Yellowhead is looking at creating right away, an annual budget. It's nice to see that we're able to use those things that are happening to help support our community, to make things more efficient. On November 2nd, the last I'll report on, oh, two more, sorry. November 2nd, there was a Rosberg Subdivision Trail Association meeting, and that was over in Sandy Lake. And Sandy Lake is actually creating a new sign kiosk right along their trail. And basically, it's got all the communities and all the stops along the railway track, because that's what our trail follows, the old railroad track. And they're looking for two features off the trail that Iqwa can submit. And they're going to have a photo of our feature on their board along with the two items that we can highlight as our points of interest. So I need help with what we should submit to them for that. We're still looking at our MOU for communities to sign. We're looking at making one change before we get them out. I know we keep talking about it. But one thing we're looking to do is, we're possibly looking to see if our trail association will actually cover the mowing, just so it's more consistent, so that the mowing along the trail is done on a timely manner when we decide, like the different weeks. We usually cut it twice a year. So we're looking at needing to get a grant to cover the cost of a tractor and the attachment that goes on the tractor that does the cutting. ATVs are still prohibited on our trail, so they're not allowed, even though we continue to see machines such, motorized vehicles such as that. Every so often, you might see one on there, but it's usually the trail maintenance person. In addition to that, we're actually looking for a new trail maintenance person. So if anyone is interested, there's going to be job ads put out in our local papers all along the trail of someone that, if they're interested in doing the maintenance on the trail. It's just something that you do a couple times a year. You go along the entire trail, so 176 kilometers. You would be able to do it at your own pace, and you would inspect the trail, and report back to the board, and do minor repairs such as repairing and replacing signs as they go missing or damage or loss. There's a question that I said I would take back to our council, because I know we have a wealth of knowledge here, and one would be, the board is questioning now, do we really need board liability insurance? And I said, you know, we've got a great CAO. She knows a lot, and she can help guide us in this for sure. We're part of the TransCanada Trails, we're part of Manitoba Trails, we're part of TransCanada, of course. But we are making some decisions, and we have some people that aren't represented by council. They're just members-at-large. And, you know, it's just a huge expense for this board to occur, you know, if we were to purchase liability insurance on our own. So it's definitely a good question, something that no one knows with 100% certainty, but we're trying to explore and find that out. So definitely, if you have any wisdom or guidance, Colleen, that would be great. The last committee I'll report on is the Environmental and Volunteerism Committee. Just to let everyone know, we met on October 24th. And we took the feedback from council in order to continue to apply some new initiatives for the future, which will be coming back to the table hopefully in the near future. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Nado. Anyone else? Counselor Sisley?
I'll make mine much shorter. The Haunted Forest, I just wanted to touch briefly on it. Nicole didn't want to throw out numbers, because she doesn't, she didn't have an exact number. We just know there was hundreds of kids down there, and it was fabulous. It was very well-run. So big thank you to Nicole Cooper, Kin Club, and Settlement Services in Philcan, sorry, of Iqwa. They did a fabulous job down there. And Marilyn wanted me to touch on the Chamber Parade of Lights, which is November 25th. It is a 6:00 PM start. There is some volunteers that are still needed. So if anybody is wanting to volunteer, you can contact Jennifer at the Chamber office at 204-476-5292.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gerard?
Okay, on October 24th, Human Resources Committee did meet and discuss some human resources affairs. But under the Freedom of Information and Security, we are about to discuss the details of that meeting. Also, under Finance and Governance, on October 29th, we did have Cabinet Minister Aleah Marcelino and have initial meetings with the town. And I thought it was great that we could have some open dialogue very early on with the new provincial government. And we discussed some innovative things that we were doing regarding education in our community, participating in healthcare, how we invested in regional buildings that are facilitating that. And I know it's going to create future meetings in short order with the same ministers. So again, very, very promising that we're hopefully at the table of the Cabinet of the new provincial government. So, and just one other one, and this would come in under Finance. I just thought I'd report. Annually, the town of Iqwa charges rent to the farming project that occurs. Now, those rents the town of Iqwa occurs are solely to recover taxes that we have to pay on the airport land that goes to the RM of Langford-North Cypress. So for that municipal facility, we have to pay rent to their RM of Langford-North Cypress. So as solely as a means of recapturing those taxes, and by doing that to that farming group, the town of Iqwa actually helps ensure that that project will put $114,000 in funds back into the community facilities, which are the Currie Club and to the Yellowheads. So again, maybe there is opportunities to capture higher rents, but I'm very happy that the town is taking the approach we have. And we're seeing $57,000 to each facility. Maybe we can get more rural partners to get involved in helping fund some of those facilities long-term.
Excellent. Okay, thanks, sir. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to Manager of Operations, Diddy.
Thank you. We hosted our pre-construction meeting for the new water main project that we've reported to the Water Services Board and Swift Construction. That was held here. Swift plans to start mobilizing materials in December. Possibly a little bit of fusing starting as well, but the main部分 construction will start in January. Parkway Project, it's darn close. I think it's about another week or two. The dike is complete, the spillway is complete. They're just doing rock placement right now, topsoil placement. They managed to scrub the entire lake, but not that people probably noticed that. Looks a little different. To run the builder out a little bit. I think the bridge is scheduled to be removed next week, depending. So everything has come together really nicely. Fall cleanup is completed, so anyone, any residents now have to bring their own leaves, compost material, compost site, staff are no longer picking that up. Again, if you're using any of the plastic bags, we really appreciate it. If you tear them open and tidy it up for us, that doesn't impede and contaminate the load. For the last couple of weeks now, we worked on the budget here in preparation. That'll be ongoing in another couple of months or so, as we keep completing quotes, announcements, and then some requests for information. So we've also removed the fire hydrant on the fire hall lot. We had to get that placement just slightly closer to the RCMP to facilitate some of their insurance needs. So that was completed by town staff. Now, I just went to the city for some project planning for 2024. We've had some joint work started, so they're probably be observing. Weather pending, again, that's posted this week, hopefully later part of the week, next night. On October 21st, I went to the city, so I attended a Trails Manitoba meeting. Weekend, it worked out really well. There was a lot of other trail enthusiasts from across the province. So they had some different fundraising ideas, some different concept ideas, different speakers, more than different parks. So it was really interesting. And final warning that, yes, the town staff know everything's very icy. Staff are out there, they're doing their best on the sidewalks, they're doing their best on the streets. We just ask that residents be patient and be very cautious when they're walking down the sidewalks or on the streets. We're doing our best. We just can't control when it's going to start freezing rain here. So please be careful.
Yeah, that's right. You know, it's been misting off and on for the last couple of days. You can't start to keep up with that. All right, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Diddy. Well, we'll move on to correspondence, Colleen.
Oh, so the first is the letter from the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations, the RMP Bush. I'd like to take this off to formally reach out to you for the first time as a minister of municipal and northern relations. I'm honored to take on this role and committed to work for municipalities and native communities to make this prospect as possible for all Manitobets. Although our work is just beginning, I am aware of the many projects and services that sustain your communities. In the weeks ahead, your administration will receive funding contribution agreements for the one-time per capita funding distributed to municipalities outside of Winnipeg. Also look forward to gaining your perspectives on a multi-year funding model for municipalities that provides reliable funding that you can count on for programs, infrastructure, and maintenance in the future. This funding and other support for service delivery, asset management, and infrastructure projects are shared priorities that address population growth and growing economies. Looking forward to meeting you all at the upcoming Association of Manitoum Municipalities Ball Convention and forging your respective partnerships with your council and your administration as we work together to make life better for families across the province. And the next one is the Brown Public Safety Communications Center. We receive these letters annually to let us know what our service agreement will be for the following year. There's going to be a 3% increase to the 911 amount that we pay over to the center over there. So it amounts to $795.90 increase. So what we will pay is $4.88 per capita, up from $4.74, and amongst a $27,742.80.
Okay. Any questions, Colleen? If not, we'll move on to Finance. I have received your September statements and reviewed them. Be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended September 30th. Moved by Counselor Nado, seconded by Counselor Costin-Chuck. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, we will then move on to revolve accounts. It is resolved that we approve the accounts October 2023 totaling $3,473,908.89 as reviewed and representing checks. 2023, 02129 to 2023, 02266, but excluding 2023, 02143, 2023, 12144, 2023, 2237. Moved by Counselor Pottinger, seconded by Counselor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Yes, so Counselor Gerard and myself will have to remove ourselves, and I will ask Counselor Costin-Chuck to make the steps.
Be it resolved that we approve check number 202302143, number 20230214, and number 20230237 for October 2023 to Home Harbor and Iqwa Gladstone Co-op totaling $18,271.42. Moved by? Second? All in favor?
Outstanding, they are utility accounts to taxes, Colleen?
So normally, we use these coordinated by addition of outstanding accounts to taxes. We decided to make a reservation this month, because there are a certain few accounts on here that the properties are going to or are in the process of being sold, and we want to make sure that we fund the taxes and make that faster than is set. We're asking for council support, adding three outstanding accounts.
Any questions? Motion reads where as section 252 of the Municipal Act authorizes a municipality to collect debts in the same manner as tax may be collected or enforced under the Act. And whereas there are outstanding utilities and accounts receivable, charges which remain unpaid are uncollectible. Therefore, be it resolved that all those accounts that remain outstanding as of November 8, 2023, from the attached list, be hereby added to the respective property tax rule. Moved by? Counselor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Counselor Pottinger. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. New business, Colleen?
So the first one is Beautiful Plains County Court Building with 2023 rent increase. So the town of Iqwa has to, a number of years, paid roughly 50% of the revenue that goes over to the county court building, among $16,900. For this particular year, we were given an invoice for $24,900, so it's an $8,000 increase. Why this is on your table right now is this was received after the budget was prepared and the financial plan was approved. So this has not been given any particular funding within your budget, and you need to decide if you're going to pay the bills.
Can I speak to this letter? Should we? I don't, I want to speak to this. Currently, at the county courthouse, there's a lot of funding. There's not a lot of fairness being respected amongst the three partners currently at the facility. You know, currently, two municipalities have zero footprint within that facility. But understanding the historical designation that, you know, we feel it's important that we have to be involved in that facility. But what we do need to do is see some equity come back in that. So I know the early conversations are is that ahead of next year's budget that we have to address it. And I think we need to see that we, I had asked Colleen to attach the legislation that actually guides the governance of that facility, and that we need to get that facility to start complying with the governance of that. And, you know, one of the few things that we do have at our disposal is that we can get the province involved to negotiate rates. It may have to come to that going forward, I'm not saying it will. But, you know, we have one municipality that draws rent out of that facility, which is not in compliance with it. And, you know, and so there's a number of issues there. But, you know, we have always agreed to this budget level. So I would recommend that, you know, that we honor the budgets that we had prior to this new invoice. I did agree against how the rents were to be levied on all three partners, but we do agree that there does need to be a rent increase for the facility. So I would say, my only recommendation is, the person who sits on that board, that we actually pay the existing rents that we've had up to this point, and then we start to go forward and get some fairness back in how we handle those fees over for that.
So can you just be clear, you're saying pay 69?
69.
The 9?
About the increase, no, yes. Again, also because of budget, because this was late to budget.
Well, and it's similar to our last meeting. Everybody recalls, we brought the white mud water, should have been for after-budget increases.
Yes, correct.
Okay, any other discussions?
Can I ask a question? What happens for the short call over there?
Currently, there is a surplus of funds that are in there, and they have been drawing down on that. So, I mean, the budgets have been a negative budget, have been drawing a surplus. And I would impress them that is not a proper budget to run a negative budget. But this is now six months after the fact when that budget was supposed to be passed, and it's outside of our budget process. So it, there will be increased rents to Iqwa potentially, but hopefully we get some more equity. It's all some of those inequities amongst the partners here.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so everybody understands the conversation? I'll read the motion. Whereas Beautiful Plains County Court Building falls under the joint jurisdiction of the town of Iqwa, RM Rosedale, municipality of North Cypress-Langford, with its operations and management looked after by a committee of representatives from the three entities. And whereas the county court building committee have warranted that a rent increase is necessary to cover the annual expenses, whereas no formal request regarding the proposed increase came forward to council considering prior to the passing of the 2023 financial plan. As a result, the budget was approved using the 2022 rental amount of $16,900. Therefore, be it resolved that council of town of Iqwa hereby approve the requested rent payment of $24,900 for 2023 to the Beautiful Plains County Court Building Committee, which includes a rent increase of $8,000. So moved by Counselor Pottinger, seconded by Counselor Gerard. All in favor? Opposed? That's disputed. Snow removal, Colleen?
So this we receive annually as well from the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. It's the same amount they're offering to pay to Iqwa for the year 2023-24, $9,885. And this is for Mount Mary Avenue, Provincial Truck Highway, 16 West, DeKalb Street, Iqwa, Window Road, and also under the District itself.
Okay, any questions? If not, be it resolved that we authorize the CAO to sign the 2023-24 snow removal agreement with Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure. Moved by Counselor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Counselor Nado. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. More snow removal.
So these are the ones that are more applicable just to the town of Iqwa in general. We, a number of years ago, we split the snow clearing operations between Pat Baker and Rob Smith. So he rides, you know, work for their employees through the winter. So far, it's been a phenomenal sharing of, you know, getting the snow cleared very quickly. And the only increases would be, you know, with Pat Baker, with specific greater 720, increase from $125 to $150. And of course, Rob Smith, there was no increases at all. So as much as there might be little differences in what they're charging depending on whether via grader or truck or whatever, overall, you know, very comparable. And I don't want to speak as I say, we've been doing that with your service.
Okay, any other questions? Motion is be it resolved that we approve the renewal contracts of D Baker back for service and Rob Smith and Sun Backhold and Trucking for the removal of snow within the town of Iqwa when required during the 2024 calendar year. Moved by? Counselor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Counselor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Colleen, new tree production?
Yeah, so these ones, I don't have a resolution for your approval tonight. I I want you to be fully aware of what it is. And we'll bring this back to the next meeting for discussion because the staff's not going to a specific community to be vetted at all. So we brought it here. The first one is a tree protection bylaw. This bylaw was drafted after noticing, you know, the city brand has one, different places have one. And when you create a tree canopy in Epitoua or any urban forest, the value you get from those specific tree canopies is immeasurable, basically. We spent a lot of money in the last three years, as you know, on trees. Denis sees a tree and he vibrates, he's so anxious, and purchases more trees. And of course, Cara has been taking pictures nonstop for our asset management of these trees. We need the ability to protect these because we have had in the past, you know, certain incidences where a resident just doesn't like that tree and cuts it down. And so this bylaw is going to say what you can and cannot do. And we're going to say those are very important to us. We invest a lot of money in those trees, and we want to make sure that they're there, you know, for the longevity. And then through this, we create that maintenance program a while ago, making sure that, you know, you know, as you know, we have a debt challenge program. You know, we make sure we purchase trees that are suspect, certain bugs and otherwise. So this would give us a little more teeth such that if we had to enforce, we can enforce better than your bylaw to make sure people abide by that. So we'd like you to read this prior to next meeting. If you have any questions, you can let us know. We'll get first reading to that bylaw at the next meeting. We also, though, created a tree protection policy because what we had in the past, we had various policies that might have spoke to, you know, the planning side of it or, you know, what happens when you snow clear, what happens when you, this. So by replacing basically four policies with this particular one, tree protection policy, and then supported by the bylaw, it also gives us the ability to talk about how work happens in proximity to trees, what a contractor would need to do to protect that tree should it be on site. Should a property owner also decide to do some work on their property and there's a jigsaw tree on the boulevard, they also have to be cognizant of the fact that that tree is their town tree. They can't wreck it either. So, and then talks about community engagement and education. And they consider that maybe there's opportunity for us to speak to, encouraging people to create that tree canopy with us. So we're very fortunate in Epitoua. There's lots of communities that probably don't identify the fact that the importance that trees deliver, the fact that they drive down just the heat in the summer by creating that canopy several degrees. Tourism, communication, all of those things. So we want you to read the bylaw and the policy. And prior to next meeting, if you have any things you'd like to amend or bring forward, we do have three chances of reading on the bylaw about the policy before the next meeting as well.
I did read the policy, and I actually like it. But I like that it's got very clear rules of how trees can be removed and the expectation of what is constituted finishing that job, whether it be stump removal, things like that. And this doesn't in fact relate to anyone, the person that has on their old private property regarding their trees, but just, these are town assets.
Anything for trimming to, it doesn't matter what it is. We valve with them, and we're going to prove to the public.
So how does that work in the case with Manitowka hydro? When they come and they hack and destroy? Just curious, because I mean, I lay witness to that on Brown every second year. Would they have to comply under our rules now?
Unfortunately, no. We have to do our best that they try to trim and prune this to the best of their abilities to not harm something. But at the end of the day, they have to protect their assets as well. So in those cases.
Dare to breathe.
In those cases, we're trying to select species that if you don't grow as high under the wires or placements, that maybe they're more shapeable, moldable trees that we can get on a steering wheel and grow and crops turning away from the wires.
That'd be use shape.
Yeah.
The brown pruning for nightmares.
So for those that are ready, and I assume you all have, is there any questions tonight that we need to think through before we get to our next meeting? And if you do have, just by all means, make sure.
It's very detailed, but it's very clear. Okay.
The last one I have, and it doesn't have a resolution as well, is a proposal to assess all information and communication policy. And we've updated our accessibility plan. So as you know, the Accessibility of Manitowka's Act was passed two years ago now. And we, as the municipality and public body, have to comply. We created basically our plan, and then we updated as the segment of years have gone by. So we're at the point where we have to update to 2024-25. You really notice in there, the basic changes in there are speaking to the fact that now we're addressing the next segment of the accessibility plan. We happen to actually have a policy talking about how our information that we present to the public or communicate to the public is accessible format. We can provide it inside 14 font or whatever is necessary. Make sure our websites comply. Make sure that everything that we might provide to the public can be given in a format that they need so that we're not limiting, you know, how we send things. So for now, our new video website and our web sites, they are, they meet the standards. We're currently assessing what our town of Epitoua website, whether it does or not. We think it does, but we just want to make sure. You know, it's a rule of the website. And then, of course, this policy will speak to all that. So once again, I will be bringing this back to the meeting. Give us some time to look at it, and back when we get on the 21st for approvals.
Okay. Any other questions? No, I think that draws us to the close of our business here. Be it resolved that we do now adjourn this regular meeting of council at 7:38 P M. Moved by councillor Costin Chuck, seconded by? Anybody? Councillor Sisley? All in favor? Opposed, carried.